If not, now is a good time to do that and please give it to the clerk. Okay. Well, everyone, thank you so much for joining us for our closed session. We'll have a closed session announcement and then the city council will welcome public comment on the closed session. Thank you. City Attorney?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. There is one item on this evening's closed session agenda. Item 2.1 is a public employee performance evaluations pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957 for council appointees, city clerk, city manager, and city attorney. And I also would like to announce that there will be no closed session report out at the conclusion of the meeting as no final action will be taken in closed session this evening.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Before we take public comment, I'd like to read a statement about the burrowing owls. The City of Mountain View remains committed to protecting wildlife guided by our Burrowing Owl Preservation Plan, which was adopted in 2012, and our Shoreline Wildlife Management Plan, which we just adopted last year. The city is seen as a leading agency that goes above and beyond to increase the population of burrowing owls and other wildlife in Mountain View. When the city's staff biologists went on administrative leave in early July, staff immediately went to work to find contract biological services to provide burrowing owl care. This included coordination, reporting, and monitoring while our employee was out. It took time to identify the qualified consultants, develop the scope of services, receive and review proposals, and draft agreements. This process has been completed. Agreements are under review and they will be executed soon. It's not the intention of the city to replace the full-time biologist with contract services. Rather, as an interim measure, contract services will provide the monitoring reporting that is typically completed within the shoreline while the full-time biologist is on leave. In the meantime, critical burrowing owl care has continued, including transition of the burrowing owls for the overwintering program, feeding, and volunteer projects to maintain and enhance the burrowing owl habitat. On Saturday, August 10th, city staff coordinated with the Santa Clara Habitat Agency, providing them with immediate access to the enclosures to transition the burrowing owls as part of the juvenile overwintering program. City staff met with Santa Clara County Habitat Agency reps on site to assist, and the agency reps thanked our city staff for the coordination and collaboration and ongoing success of the program at Shoreline. This is consistent with the city's past practice. City staff has been trained by the Shoreline Biologist, and those staff continue to feed the owls in the enclosures for the two weeks after being released, following the city's typical protocol. In the months of August, four volunteer events were held to enhance the habitat within Shoreline. These events will continue to be scheduled in the future. City staff have temporarily paused projects at Shoreline that would require approval of a biologist until appropriate services are established to ensure our wildlife safety. These projects include maintenance and safety repairs of the landfill infrastructure, which are required to meet our strict regulatory compliance. Once onboard, the contract biologist will work with city staff to conduct project evaluations so that needed projects continue in a timely fashion, but that we ensure the safety of our burrowing owls and our wildlife. The city staff is aware that the California Department of Fish and Wildlife has found that protecting the western burrowing owl under the California Endangered Species Act may be warranted. The State Fish and Wildlife Commission is expected to vote on whether to advance the burrowing owl to candidate status at its October 10th meeting. If the burrowing owl becomes a candidate species, the Fish and Wildlife Department would have 12 to 18 months to conduct a full status review before the commission votes on an endangered or threatened designation. We are committed to this, and we are communicating with new local California Department of Fish and Wildlife Biologists to gather information about this process and how a change in designation would impact the city's existing policies and procedures. The city is committed to following any new regulations that come from a possible status change of the burrowing owls. Staff will present an update on the Burrowing Owl Preservation Plan and the Wildlife Management Plan to the Parks and Rec Commission at their upcoming meeting on September 11th. Mountain View has a long history of partnering with the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society and other conservation groups and looks forward to continuing this collaboration. Thank you for listening. Okay, so now we're going to start our public comment. Would any member of the public, joining us virtually or in person, like to provide comment on the closed session agenda? If so, please step forward or click the raised hands button on Zoom. Each speaker will have a minute and a half. How many speakers are there? Can you raise your hands?
We're on owls, though. We're unclear what you're saying.
We don't have another, because of, because this, let me explain this a little bit. This, when this agenda item came out, this, this meeting came out, it was really designed to just be for the closed session, for the, you know, for the evaluation of our appointees. And so we didn't put a regular public comment period on it because there, you know, there wasn't going to be, there weren't going to be any other items. But we recognize that the public is very concerned about this. So tonight, we're going to invite you to speak on the owls so that we can hear your concern. So this is really a sort of a special procedural situation, and we're just going to make the best we can of it. Okay. So with that, I would like to request that people who would like to speak and have turned in a blue card, please come forward. Clerk, do we have anybody who's turned in a blue card?
Yeah, can you, do you see the list on your screen? No?
I do not. You want to call the first person? Ah, there they are. Daniel Disordo.
Hi, my name's Daniel Disordo, and I've volunteered with the Guardian Project for the past three years. A large portion of my work with the Guardian Project has been wildlife and conservation photography, so I actually wanted to share some photos from the site with you guys.
Can you speak into the microphone when you get back?
Sure.
Thanks.
The lead biologist on the project, Phil Higgins, has emphasized the importance of responsible wildlife photography and interaction with the burrowing owls. The conservation of the owls has always taken priority over getting the perfect image. Phil and the Guardian Project have provided a way to see and photograph the owls at Shoreline while minimizing the potential negative impacts of people venturing too close to the burrows. Without a permanent lead biologist, the Guardian Project and Shoreline are losing a vital source of accumulated knowledge about the individual pairs of owls onsite. Right now, the consistent counts of owls and chicks aren't being performed, and this is a key way of measuring the continued positive population growth. Additionally, many of the measures to prevent predation and direct contact with the public are not taking place. Each day that this continues represents a threat to the burrowing owl population at Shoreline. Population numbers had just begun to bounce back, and the program was experiencing the greatest positive growth in owl numbers since the project began. I hope the Mountain View City Council will reen-
Thanks for your thoughts, Tim Dobbins, and after that will be Sylvia Palmer. Well, hi, Tim. I haven't seen you in a long time. Yeah.
Mayor, how are you? I am Tim Dobbins, longtime resident of Mountain View. I am one of at least four people here this evening who were at Shoreline this morning, weeding to help our friends, the owls and the monarch butterflies. But mostly, I would like to add my appreciation for the work of Phil Higgins. I have worked with him at the owl habitat and grassroots ecology events at Shoreline for years now. Not only can he recognize every creature, bird, plant, and insect in Mountain View by name, he can talk at length about any one of them. But more importantly, he can gather a group of strangers to do unpaid physical labor outdoors, convince them that they are having fun while doing a great job, and have them all eager to return at any time. Thank you.
Very much. Next speaker, Sylvia. Welcome back.
So I'm going to actually speak on the adjourned item of the closed session. I sent a comment as well. Basically, what was it, 2021, we had our vision setting process. We had so much community input and engagement, and it made me really excited that, to see all of these thoughts and ideas and optimism coming into our city's strategic plan and work plan. And when I look at the strategic priorities, they are, we made a choice not to prioritize them individually, but to represent all of them as a community's sort of set of goals and guidelines. And I just don't see a lot of the action that's coming out from city staff reflecting them. So we get volunteers that are told, no, they can't work on projects. We have projects that have been approved through city council that aren't being completed. We have projects being changed after the community input. And so all of this is really sad to me because I think just a few years ago, we had so much potential, and I'm not seeing it happen. And I know that at city council meetings, I see it still as our goals, but it's not happening. And so I'm really sad about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tracy Faria, and then Gail Stevens.
Sorry, I made up three minutes because that's what I read, and I don't come here very often.
I'm sorry. It's a minute and a half tonight. Yeah.
Well, I'm going to cut my thanks. But-
Talk into the microphone because there are people listening at home.
Yes. We are, I think it's ironic that with all the stuff we have done as a council, that now we have no biologist. We're in the middle of the sixth great extinction. Our owls are about to go on the endangered species list while the city discusses its vision of biodiversity. The biologists are key to smart implementation to the plans. They can't be just hired off the street. And it might be easy for a bureaucrat to write off the response as it's a bunch of volunteers that just love to work with Phil and Ryan. However, that's far from the truth. Shoreline's management's words given last October were Brady said, I quote, "I personally attest that his knowledge and the knowledge of the wildlife and habitat for us has been invaluable to the city. We're very fortunate that we have someone like Phil that helps Shoreline moving forward, but also keeping all the wildlife safe and habitat protected and in good standing. It is a delicate balance out here, and we couldn't do it without Phil." Brady understood Phil's institutional knowledge. You can't just replace someone who wrote their masters on our local burrowing owl diet, has worked caring for our owls for 23-plus years with numerous publications and critical research on them. I'm pretty sure it would be easier to replace the bureaucrat whose poor decision led to this and to the cutting of our volunteer hours. As a resident voter and volunteer, I'd like to ask the council to rectify this situation, restoring the expertise and volunteer hours. And I know with your courage and leadership, we can save our owls for the next generation. Wow. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for your leadership.
Gail Stevens, please.
Mayor, City Council, I appreciate your service and your hard work, so thank you for that. These hands have planted hundreds of native plants at Shoreline's burrowing owl habitats, including this morning when we were weeding. And also, I helped care for thousands of native plants that were planted by volunteers before me. For years, there's a legacy of volunteers that have been trying to help improve the habitat for the burrowing owls. That's why we do our hard work. It's because we care about these owls and all wildlife at Shoreline. We do this work under the direction and expertise and guidance of Phil Higgins and also Ryan Phillips. They know what all the plans are, what the sensitivities are, what the priorities are, what needs to be done in which season. I've learned so much for them, but they are respected experts on Shoreline's wildlife, habitat, and especially burrowing owls. And they're the, they're the people you want on your side should the burrowing owls become listed as endangered species. You're going to need them. In July, we all were canceled without explanation, and I would like to take my remaining 17 seconds to urge you to bring back Phil and Ryan as soon as possible. All of Shoreline's wildlife and habitat needs them very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee Bryant, and then Laura Macias. Welcome back.
Yes, thank you. I have a beautifully written piece of comments here, but I'm not going to use them. I'm going to respond to what the mayor said. You know, I love the city and I love the priorities that you guys set and the things that we have always prided ourselves about Mountain View, our care for our residents and for the environment. And this summer, there was a, there was a breakdown in Shoreline, and I don't accept the description as everything is okay. Everything is not okay. The ball was dropped. Programs like the programs around the burrowing owls that are really near and dear of the heart and soul for many of us, we're not, we're not taking care of the way they should have. It was like, we'll take care of it as best we can. Whatever, whatever personnel issues the city had, a program that is near and dear to you, you don't say, we'll do the best we can, but there's all kinds of problems. If it's important, you put all the effort into it. And I'd better be quick. Having great, I love great plans, having plans and priorities just go so far because actions speak louder than words, and you need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Another former mayor, Laura Macias, welcome back.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just clarify that when we authorized the full-time hiring of biologists to take care of the burrowing owls many years ago, when I was on council, that was innovative. And there was a really good reason that we did that. And there's still a really good reason to do that because our problems with bird populations are no less. In fact, with global warming, they're worse. So we have someone like Phil Higgins, and I don't know his assistant, but I do know of Phil very well. And now that I've returned back after some family priorities, I'm here because this is the place where we do innovation. And some of that innovation can be continued and improved upon, not walked away from. And that's what I hope we'll do. Quality of life is so important, and quality of life includes not only, not only the people here, but also our animals, our trees, everything. And so it really matters that this is, it seems like there's a wrong in that wrong that's to right it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Can I just add that when I called to see if there was an opportunity to speak, I was told there was not. So maybe we'll just get that clarification at some point.
We had some discussion about that. Julianne Wang, please. Welcome. I understand you have a presentation for us?
Yeah, I have a presentation. Good evening, Mayor Shawalter and council members. I'm Junyean Wang with Santa Clara, Santa Clara Valley, I'm sorry, Bird Alliance. So I'm a resident in Mountain View, and I would like to talk to you how important Shoreline is for burrowing owls. Next slide, please. So burrowing owls live in ground squirrel burrows or artificial burrows. They are very small and durable. They are at risk of extinction in the Bay Area and most of California. And they seem to be doing well only when people actively intervene with conservation programs. Next slide, please. Burrowing owl's population have been declining for a long time, and Mountain View came to rescue. Next slide. In 2012, the city adopted a burrowing owl preservation plan to enhance protection efforts. Since 2014, the city has been working in synergy with conservation programs of the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agencies. Next slide, please. Mountain View is critical to the survival of burrowing owls. In 2023, there are only 51 adult burrowing owls in the South Bay Area and only 21 successful breeding pairs. Of these, you can see in the graph, one third, which is 17 adult owls, and five successful pairs were at Shoreline. Please take care of the owls, bring a full-time biologist back. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Shani Kleinhaus.
Madam Mayor, quick question. Ms. Wang, can we get a copy of the slides if you get a chance and email it to us? Thank you.
Good thought. Shani Kleinhaus, and after that, Eileen McLaughlin. Shani is speaking on behalf of five virtual, five people virtually.
And Dash is going to join me, so we're going to speak together if that's okay. Thank you.
How many minutes are you all here?
Six?
Six and a half. Not sure exactly, but I think about that, yeah, I hope. Okay, so I'll start. Good evening, Mayor Shawalter and council members. My name is Shani Kleinhaus. I'm speaking for the Santa Clara Valley Bird Alliance, we changed our names.
And hello, I'm Dashal Leeds, the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. Our organizations serve the Mountain View community in multiple ways. The Bird Alliance Education Program works with nine elementary schools, serving about 500 3rd and 4th grade students a year, offers two to four field trips each month at Cuesta Park, Charleston Slough, and the Stevens Creek Trail in Shoreline, and various outreach events. The Bird Alliance sponsors the volunteers at the Cuesta Pollinator Garden by providing insurance. Hundreds of residents volunteer or participate in these programs. Both the Bird Alliance and the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter advocate for biodiversity, including species especially at risk of extinction, such as the burrowing owl. In September of last year, we advocated for the continued use of the Shoreline Community Fund for all the important functions, services, and programs that Shoreline Park entails. These include wildlife conservation, including burrowing owls, black skimmers, and many other sensitive animal species, protections from sea level rise, landfill operations, and more.
Thank you. 15 years ago, when I started working at Audubon, now Bird Alliance, my predecessor stated, you can expect to devote a lot of time to burrowing owl conservation, but in the end, you will not save them, and they will break your heart. I still believe we can save them together, but I think there are a lot of people here and on Zoom whose hearts have been broken, including me, in this, this summer. With, and what happened in the summer of 2024 is incomprehensible to us. Mountain View's commitment to burrowing owl conservation has been a ray of hope for years, and other people talked about it, so I'll gain a few seconds by not repeating it. Mountain View biologists work synergistically with the Habitat Agency to augment the city's own projects and programs, and with these strong collaborations with Audubon Habitat Agency and others, and with the implementation by passionate, dedicated, professional biologists, the owls were doing well, and the community could trust that the owls and other species are in good hands. So you can imagine our surprise and shock when we learned that in the beginning of July, the owl biologists were no longer there, and that there was no professional biologist on site at all, no one to replace them. So both the conservation programs stopped and long-term monitoring, scientific monitoring also stopped. The owls that were part of the overwintering program were- The owls that were part of the overwintering program were kept in cages and enclosures without a biology supervising. So while we understand that somebody fed them and gave them water, we see that as a neglect, and we believe that their health and safety was in jeopardy. And those owls are special. They were bred with a particular genetic breeding to save our owls in the entire region because genetic diversity is important to conservation. So fortunately, but one of them survived. But how was this allowed to happen? Would the city consider placing all the firefighters on leave and leaving a rookie with a hose and say, okay, there's a fire, you deal with it? This is what happened here, and this is an endangered species. And this is a very important time in their breeding, in their lifecycle, the time that they fledge and disperse. So how did this happen? From what we understand, when the Habitat Agency finally realized what was happening and that there was no professional on site, and they reached the city to try and retrieve their burrowing owls or set them free, it took six days before that was arranged. Six more days that the owls were there. Most of the time, they're released in mid-July or in June even. So the repercussions go even further, and I should go really fast. But long-term monitoring and science is important to implement those conservation programs that the city has. Without it, you can't implement them. And there is regional and statewide programs that also depend on that monitoring, and that has stopped. So maybe they can resume it, but there's a gap, and that gap should not have been there. So I'll let you go because otherwise--
So at this time, we asked the council to recover the implementation of the burrowing owl preservation plan and the Shoreline Wildlife Management Plan and restore public trust. We do have a handout hopefully making its way around to you with these asks, which is, one, ensure that a full-time biologist is restored, the position is restored on city staff. The biologist should have the same qualifications and scope of responsibilities as the previous current full-time biologist, including project evaluation, the implementation of the burrowing owl preservation plan, and the Shoreline Wildlife Management Plan, and working with volunteers to enhance habitat. Number two is to engage a qualified assistant to ensure the continuity of care and monitoring in times when the biologist is on vacation, medical leave, or other short-term absences. Third is to not--please do not use outside consultants or contractors.
Thank you. We do have the handout, and we appreciate the time you took to put it together. Now we are going to move to our virtual speakers. I believe Eileen McLaughlin is first, and then Aisha.
Good evening, Mayor Shawalter and members of council. I'm Eileen McLaughlin for the Citizens Committee to Complete the Refuge. I come here tonight to echo the concerns about the loss of real scientific talent in the city that has occurred here, and it occurred very abruptly as far as these programs were concerned, burrowing owl and for all of the programs involved with Shoreline Park. So I come here to share the thought that since establishing the burrowing owl preservation plan, the city had stood out in wildlife leadership, inclusive of pursuing the Shoreline Wildlife Plan and coordinating with restoration of the salt ponds. It all worked while a qualified staff biologist of a burrowing owl plan requirement served as city liaison with other wildlife science-based programs. In that gap, and you've acknowledged that these folks, that other things have been dropped outside of burrowing owls, you haven't had that expertise. The person who can speak for the wildlife through science, data collection, its analysis, its use of vest of science, new information coming in, methods, and other investigations, please make sure that that is corrected quickly and permanently. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Aisha or Aisha? Are you there?
Hi. Hi, I'm Aisha. I'm the organizer behind the Guardian Project. That's the grassroots community effort to save the burrowing owl in Shoreline Park. So since 2016, that's eight years, I've organized more than 200 unique volunteers who've contributed 1,340 hours at 65 events by planting 2,022 native plants for the burrowing owls. My project has educated and provided hope to both the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts of America by being an effective, tangible example for how to save our dying planet. So most of our volunteer sessions have had to be during the weekdays because we haven't even been allowed to do weekends, which is when the kids can do it. It's been denied by city staff. It's been clear since the beginning that the city is reluctant to even allow our community to save our owls. We were doing two sessions a month for volunteers with Phil, but now we've been dropped to one. And at the last session, not the one today, but a couple of weeks ago, we saw a red fox chasing a hare. And red foxes, we've seen on camera, eat burrowing owls. The threat to our owls is imminent, and I don't see how a contractor being brought in will possibly have the knowledge to save our owls and to resume all the activities, including mowing down the grass that has already grown so tall that allows these red foxes to sneak up on our owls. And it's absolutely heartbreaking. I want to iterate that. It's heartbreaking what has happened to Phil, and that no one was told what happened. Thank you.
No clapping, please. We don't clap or boo in council meetings to make sure that we have an atmosphere where everybody feels safe. So the next speaker is Bruce England, and after that, Marjorie Siegel. Bruce, are you there?
I am. Do you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. Thanks, Mayor, and council members and everybody who's spoken so far. I'm not going to speak for very long. I support essentially everything that has been said so far from the community, and I appreciate, Mayor, your statement at the beginning to help provide some context. What I do want to say is that input and support from the public is so important, and even though the city might be confident that the right things are being done and will be done, it's important that you hear from the community and that you hear the concerns and even the skepticism that comes from the public just to help ensure that attention is placed on this adequately over time. Because one thing that can happen is that everybody is concerned right now and trying to do the right thing, and then, you know, a month from now, other priorities come into play, and then attention is drawn away from this. And so I think that this exercise tonight of everybody speaking, which is really great to see and great to hear, it's very informative, will help make the point with the city, with council, and with staff, that a lot of people out here in the community care very deeply about this, including bringing on a permanent full-time biologist and other matters related to this. Thanks.
Thank you. And then the next speaker is Marjorie Siegel. Marjorie, are you available?
Hello, I'm Marjorie Siegel. I'm a long-term Bay Area resident and a frequent visitor to enjoy the burrowing owls and other wildlife at Shoreline Park in Mountain View. I care a lot about our native species, such as burrowing owls, and I'm really concerned that there aren't many of them left, as we're hearing tonight. Mountain View's Burrowing Owl Preservation Plan and the other conservation programs are necessary to keep these precious owls from going extinct. Please, please engage a full-time biologist with the necessary qualifications and scope of work to continue burrowing owl preservation and monitoring programs. Please ensure that these preservation programs continue and that you engage and inform the community frequently. We want to know how these owls are faring. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Leslie Friedman. Leslie, are you there?
There we go. Now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Mountain View can be congratulated for efforts to improve and preserve our natural resources. That is why it seems so strange that the longtime efforts to protect the burrowing owls stopped, or seem to have stopped. The agreement for the owls includes a required biologist that is different than pulling in a part-time consultant. My hat is off to the council and the city at Hall for going to work on a complex process to preserve the lives of the owls. I do hope that the city will reengage the biologists. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that brings us to the end of our speakers. I'd like to thank everybody for taking part. And I would also like to remind everybody that the Parks and Rec Commission meeting on September 11th will have a presentation on the program. And that will, because it will be agendized, that will be an opportunity for not only people to say things, but for staff to answer questions. And the way our system works, you know, unless it's agendized, we can't really respond, which is often difficult. So anyway, I just want to remind everybody of that. Thank you for coming. And right with that, we will recess to our closed session, and we will be back on September 10th for our next regular meeting. Thank you very much.